We almost leave.
Yes.
There you go.
Nice.
How are you, girl?
Um, I'm really good. My people, my people are dying.
I just found out.
I just posted it today on Facebook. Um, that's what it does to our children. If they're down to play, what's it mean to our children? And how much money? How much are we spending?
Okay.
How much is it? How much will it generate?
I can't, you know, I can't understand my own shorthand.
Well, it's my hand.
Um, that's for...
Total cost.
Total cost, why didn't you just say that?
Total remnants, uh, estimated remnants.
Oh, but it's what period of time? But you want anything else? But what I'm getting is you won't see a difference until 25. Is that what you want, you understand?
You ever need, you ever need a...
I'd like to call this, I'd like to call this Flint City Council meeting to order. Roll, Madam Clerk.
Yeah, got it. Ms. Croom?
Here.
Ms. Poplar?
Present.
Mr. Nolden? Mr. Freeman? Mr. Wayhill?
Here.
Mr. Sargentson?
Here.
Mr. Kincaid?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Nolden, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance this evening? Please all rise and after the Pledge of Allegiance, please remain standing. Councilwoman Poplar would like a moment of silence for the distinguished person of our community.
Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I would like a moment of silence for Mrs. Ruby Motley, who was the Directress of the Youth Ministry for the Wolverine State Baptist Congress of Christian Education. And also she was the Youth Leader for a number of years at Mount Calvary Missionary Baptist Church, and she did at least three generations of the youth at Mount Calvary. So I would ask for a moment of silence for her passing. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Special order this evening, Madam Clerk.
We have two special orders this evening. The first special order is to allow a presentation by Jeff Wright, the Genesee County Drain Commissioner, on the KWA authority. Mr. Wright?
Just, um, before you start, Jeff, I just first want to take this opportunity to thank you for being here. I know it's, uh, kind of short notice, uh, on our part. We've talked about the KWA pipeline for some time, and time is running, uh, short, I feel, for the City Council to be able to take a position on this while we have authority. So I had, um, talked to the mayor who was here this evening, and, um, I talked to Jerry Ambrose, uh, who's here this evening, and I asked you to come over here, uh, before the council so that you could, uh, talk about KWA, so that we could ask questions, and also, um, if there are questions for, um, the project on the city's behalf from Mr. Ambrose, so he's here this evening too. So, go ahead, Mr. Wright, and thank you again for being here this evening.
My pleasure, and I want to thank the City Council and the Madam Clerk for the nice introduction. I am here tonight because I want to give you a little history of what's happened the last three to four months for our efforts, uh, with Lansing, City of Flint, our other partners, and ourselves. So this council knows, uh, last November of 2012, the Drain Commissioner's Office was prepared to actually set a bid date in December for their intake portion of this pipeline project. Because the Treasury in Lansing and because Flint had additional questions, we postponed that bid until February 25th. Now, the reason of this postpone, excuse me, February 26th, the reason for this postponement is mainly because Treasury in Lansing wanted to do an independent review of the KWA studies and the proposals from your current supplier, the City of Detroit. We worked diligently for several months, including December and January, to supply Lansing Treasury, i.e., with the information that they needed to make a decision on whether they would release Flint to make their decision. Now, it's always been my position that Lansing shouldn't be the ones making this decision. You, the elected representatives of the people of Flint, should make this decision up or down. But because Lansing at that time had, and still does, has some jurisdiction over what Flint does, we worked with the Lansing representatives from Treasury, with the City of Detroit representatives to supply them with all of the information and data that we had, so they could make a decision. At our last meeting with the Treasurer in Lansing, he himself set a deadline of January 15th as the time when Lansing would make the decision on releasing Flint to make up its own mind. January 15th has come and gone, as has February 15th, and we're getting very close to March 15th, and there's been no word on the decision of the state. To that end, we actually bid the contract for the intake of the pipe on the 26th of February. The project, there were, there were five bidders, four of them from the state of Michigan, one of them from Texas. Four of the five bidders actually came in below the engineer's estimate for the intake pipe. The engineer's estimate was $27 million for this piece of the project. The low bid was $24.6 million, and that was a Michigan contractor. I will remind everybody in the audience and on the council that we've put in this contract the requirement that whoever that contractor is, they hire 75% of their people from our community to do this work. If they don't, they pay a 2% penalty, which is considerable when you're talking millions of dollars on a contract. I feel confident that the contractor will meet those obligations of hiring local people to build this system. But the reason that I really want to stress tonight that I'm here is the fact that we've delayed this project to the point to accommodate Lansing particularly, that we cannot delay it any longer. To that end, I contact, I was in contact with Ed Kurtz last week to let him know that we've come to a point in time where I cannot hold off on completing this project and moving forward with this project. So my personal reason for coming here this evening is to let you know personally, not through a third party or a second party, that we've come to a point in time where I can't hold the project up any longer. Several reasons for that. One, we have a limited construction season in Michigan that usually starts in April or May. I have 60 days of paperwork with these contractors to get them on the job in April or May. So we've ran out of time there. The other very critical aspect of this is next construction season. It was our goal to start in January of this year to do the final design for the pipe that actually goes from Lake Huron to the City of Flint. And we've held that up for two months now. It's going to take us all of this year to complete that design work, and the idea was to be in a position to bid that work for construction in the year 2014. So we've come to a point in time where unfortunately, against my preferable feelings, I have to move forward with the rest of the communities, the 17 townships, the two other counties, the, uh, seven other cities that are already part of this. I have to move forward, or we truly risk not only losing the construction season, but by doing so, losing the financial, um, interest rates that are out there today. Who knows what happens next year with interest rates? Right now, borrowing money is at its cheapest point since the 60s. And the other aspect is the fact that the contractors have shown through this last bid that they're hungry also. They've came in, four of them, below the engineer's estimate, and in one case by almost $3.5 million. So it's critical for us to move forward. I will always hope that the city is part of that. Of course, that's a decision that this body should make, not Lansing. I hope this body at some point gets that opportunity to make that decision, and, um, I'll be glad to try to answer any questions or comments that you have.
Okay. Councilwoman Poplar first.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Jeff. I have some concerns, and, um, I'm going to give you just a couple of questions here.
Sure.
And I want some honest answers, please. Because I need to share this with my constituents and the taxpayers of the City of Flint. And these should be easy questions for you to a- answer.
Make them harder.
I want to start with, um, the number one question right now. The pros and cons of this project. The advantages, and what does the disadvantages hold on this project? My second question to you is in the long run, such as 30 years from now, how much will be put on the backs of the taxpayers in a 30-year span? And then my third question would be to you, the cost to the taxpayers within the next 10 years, what would be the cost to them? And my final question to you, because there's been some rumors, you know how they run rampant. This project, will it run through private properties, or will it run through county roads and county properties? So those are my four main concerns, and you can start with number one.
Thanks for the questions, Councilwoman Poplar. I'll start with the pros and cons. We have to put it in context that Flint really has three options. One is the Flint River utilized by Flint by itself. That's something that's been studied completely, uh, by Flint's own engineering firm. That project is no more cost-effective than the KWA. And then there's your current supplier, which is the City of Detroit. So we always have to keep in context what the options are to KWA. If you don't join KWA or go to the Flint River, then your other option is another 30-year contract with Detroit. The pros of KWA, and these are not my numbers, but numbers that come from representatives of these Treasury in Lansing, from representatives of the engineering firms that represent Flint, and from independent analysis done by financial people like Miller Canfield, Stotter Barch, et cetera. The minimum that the Flint people will s- save or realize in reduction of cost, just the Flint water customers alone, over a 25-year period, the minimum that will be saved by those people is $109 million. I believe that it'll be a little higher than that, but that's the minimum that all independent analysis has shown will be the savings to the people of Flint. It could be as much as $2 to $250 million, depending on if we continue to get these low contractor bids. So the very first pro to this is the fact that the people of Flint will save, literally, tens of millions of dollars over time as compared with a 30-year contract with the City of Detroit. Another pro to this is the fact that you, the City of Flint, will have a seat at the table. You will be an owner of the system. This is not a system being built by Genesee County, or by LaPierre, or by Sanalac. If it's done as a partnership, as has been proposed and approved by this body under the Carrick-Nandy Water Authority, you will get probably five seats on the table, and this is set up similarly to how the Bishop Airport Authority is set up, the MTA Authority is set up. It's made up of members from this community, from the county community, et cetera. So you'll literally own part of the system, instead of just being a purchaser of water. And by owning part of this system, you will have a seat at the table in the, uh, form of five members of this board. The fact that up to 75% of the people that are working on this project have to come from our area. The Regional Chamber in the past has estimated that close to 1,000 jobs over a three-year period will be generated by this project. These are high-paying construction jobs, from laborers to equipment operators to surveyors and engineers. As a matter of fact, the two engineering firms that are located in your city, Row Engineering and Wade Trim Engineering, are already working on the intake portion of this project and the project oversight, and they are employing a couple of dozen people in the City of Flint already that are working on this project. I think the, the real issue is to control your own destiny. As part of KWA, Flint will be in control of its water future, whereas right now it isn't. I honestly can't say, compared to your current supplier, what the cons would be. There may be some questions from this body that could point out some of the negatives, but I honestly can't tell you a negative as compared to our current supplier of water. So I'll stick with the pros on that. Your next question was the long-term, um, to the taxpayers. First of all, the taxpayers don't pay for this project. Only the water customers in Flint, Genesee County, and its communities pay for it. Now granted, most people in Flint are on the water system, so they would be payers of this system. But there's no taxes involved. This is all paid through water rates.
Excuse me, Jeff?
Yes.
Okay. You said there's no taxes on this, but the people of the City of Flint will be paying for this water. So that means they could have a 20%, 25% water increase with this pipeline, or a 30% increase? What kind of increases are we talking?
I can't speak to how Flint will structure its portion, because I don't have any jurisdiction over it. What I can tell you is this year, the City of Flint will pay the City of Detroit $12 million to purchase water. That's what the city customers will pay in their water bills that will be collected by Flint employees, and then that money will be paid to the City of Detroit, $12 million. KWA is $8 million annually to bring water right to your treatment plant. Now, there are some additional costs for you to treat that water, but right up front, there's a $3 to $4 million difference between what you pay just to purchase water and what you would pay to be part of this partnership. $12 million versus $8 million. Now, what the city does with that eight, or that $4 million or $3 million difference is decided by this body, not by myself. But there is a substantial potential savings annually from what you're paying currently to what, um, you would be with KWA. Now, with KWA, contractually, that's a fixed cost for 25 years. That eight to 8.2 million, somewhere in that range, does not go up for 25 years. That is a fixed contractual rate that the city is responsible for. So you'll also have some certainty that this is how much I'm going to pay for the next 25 years. Whereas if you sign another 30-year contract with your current supplier, you know that there will be an annual increase on top of that $12 million every year for the next 25 years. So there's substantial potential savings for the city and its customers. But it's up to the council and the city to determine how they use those savings, because frankly, you have many water lines in your community that are leaking every day. That's part of your water cost problem. So you may decide to use some of those dollars to fix those water lines, so you don't have that water loss, and you're paying for water that you're not even using. So there's a lot of different ways that money could be used, including potentially lowering the rates or keeping the rates stable for the Flint residents, but that's a decision that's made by the Flint representation and not myself.
Okay, one, one other comment on that. It's not the Flint City Council that raises these customers' rates. If we could, if, if the city is going to have a savings, well, I hope big brother, this City of Flint, will pass the savings on to the customer. And if the city is saving anything, then they should not be the ones to continue raising these water rates, because the average person now is paying between $150 and $200 a month. And I would hate to see it go up to $250 or $300 a month. But as you say, it, it's, it's on the foot of the City of Flint.
Yes.
That's on the back of the constituents.
Yes, to, to sum up the, the last couple of questions for you. If Flint's part and partner with KWA, then you will have a fixed cost for 25 years.
Okay.
If you're with the current supplier, you are going to ha- and that fixed cost starts at $8 million in a few, in a few, uh, is it 8.2, Jen? 8.3? About 8.2, actually. Whereas your current supplier is currently at 12 just to the Flint residents, and you will get annual rate increases on that for the next 25 years.
Okay. And my last question?
That was private properties, absolutely. I, I, um, I don't read the blogs too often, but they are pointed out to me quite often. And I've been, um, it's been said that I own the property, or close friends of mine own all the property between here and the lake. It's been said that I own the pipeline company that's going to supply the pipe. It's been said that I own the engineering firms, the contractors, et cetera. I assure all of you, Jeff Wright, no one in his family, no one in his circle owns or operates any of the properties, any of the businesses, and stands to gain nothing personally from anything on this project. To the direct question of private property versus right-of-ways. This project has been designed from day one, and it's fortunate where we purchased the property. The pieces of property that have been purchased were done through a public auction. The pieces of property, the main piece, was actually previously owned by Detroit Edison. This is the piece of property that's on the lake. That property was purchased through an auction process when Genesee County purchased it in 2001. We, the KWA members in the Water and Way Services Division, purchased 40 acres of that property just within the last few weeks to build our intake pipe. The cost of that was $340,000. That money is to pay back the city, or excuse me, the county who put the money up front to purchase the property in the first place. The rest of the pipeline is literally designed to be on public road right-of-way, so the requirement to purchase private property is minimal, if at all. The whole thing, from our perspective and from our preliminary engineering, has shown that it can be put in public road right-of-way from lake all the way to the Flint, uh, facilities. Now, if there are some easements that are required, because sometimes putting it in road right-of-way isn't necessarily the best financial reason to do something. There are times when it's more expensive to put facilities in highly-developed road right-of-ways. Most of these road right-of-ways are dirt roads in the middle of no place. They don't have gas lines, power lines, phone lines that interfere with the construction. But the closer you get to the city, the more utilities you have, and in some instances, it may be more cost-effective to actually get additional pr- private easement along that road right-of-way and save money. All of those potential easements that may happen, or future purchases that may happen, are a matter of public record. When we do these things, and we have a history, we've collected over 700 easements on other internal projects over the last 10 years. You see exactly who owned the property, you see exactly what they were paid, and you can track from there whether they've been the family owners for 30 years, or some person that's trying to get in and take advantage of it, put an option on the property, and then try to hold us up for higher dollars. That has not happened on this project, and I won't let it happen frankly on this project. I won't let it happen, frankly, on this project. As we all know, it was a major factor as to why Flint today doesn't own its own water line. From the 1960s, when you started to construct your own water line and some of these unusual practices took place which stopped that project in its tracks, the city of Flint sold everything to the city of Detroit. City of Detroit built that water line that city of Flint started, and we've been buying water from them ever since.
Thank you, Jeff, so much.
My pleasure.
Councilman Nolan?
Just a couple of questions. You just talked a minute ago about five members on the board. How many, how many members, how many members will be on the board altogether?
How many members will be on the board altogether? There'd be, including the original five core members? Five, 15 total, and that includes from Genesee County, city of Flint, city of Lapeer, Lapeer, and Santa Lake Counties.
All right. Are all the members voting members, or is it just?
Those 15 are. There are two additional members, a secretary and a treasurer, that are non-voting members, but they're appointed by the board. The 15 core members, starting with the five core members from, the way the authority was set up, is whomever's the mayor of Flint's an automatic member. Whoever's the drain commissioner in Genesee County's an automatic member. Whoever's the mayor of Lapeer is an automatic member. Whoever's the drain commissioner in Santa Lake and Lapeer Counties are automatic members. Those are the five core members. And then based on how much capacity each community buys into, they get additional board members, and that's where you get your additional, the county does, et cetera. So altogether, 15.
Okay. How much is the city of Flint's portion if we decide to go with this?
Well, I don't know. That's something that the city has to decide. I know initially, when we did our original studies, when this body authorized us and actually contributed financially to the original studies, the city was looking at 36 million gallons a day. Now, it's my understanding that the city, because of reduced use and other factors, is now currently looking at 18 million gallons a day as ownership of this facility. So it's changed, and without knowing exactly what the city was going to use, the 18, or 20, or 22, it would be hard for me to answer that.
You know, one of my concerns with the pipeline is, you know, by the city of Flint being in financial difficulty as it is right now, to incur a large debt like this, I have some real concerns with it, that the city can't afford it, not with all the different, different things going on with our financial situation. So, you know, that's one of my concerns. Secondly, and I think you spoke to it earlier, didn't you say that the state is going to have to make this decision?
I don't know if the state has the right to make the decision or not. Personally, I'm not a legal counsel. I believe the way the current emergency manager laws are written, you have the right to make the decision. I think the state has been holding that decision-making process up while they have reviewed all the options. But, and I believe, and again, I'm not a legal counsel, I believe that the city council has the right to decide something that's going to affect their citizens for the next 25 years, whether they vote for it or vote against it.
So it could actually be that if we decided to vote for this in support of it, that the state could turn around and tell us that we can't do it anyway?
I can't, I can't speak for the state, Mr. Councilman.
Another, another question I need to ask, and this might be for the mayor as well. Have we done any studies with the, I guess, the DEQ related to the Flint River and using that as a source?
I believe that, I haven't, I've been involved with some discussions on it. I believe that there are people here, maybe Howard Croft or the mayor, that could give you an update on that. We've not sit down but once to make sure that all the questions were getting asked that needed to be asked. I'll tell you, the Flint River is a viable option. The cost is just as expensive as going with KWA, if you're talking about investments of the people, because you have dams that you have to rebuild, Kersley Dam, Holloway Dam, et cetera. And that was all laid out in a study that was done by the city's engineer, Row Engineering, that I presented to this council a little over a year ago, that lays out those costs of going to the Flint River. It is feasible. The only drawback, in my opinion, of the Flint River, there are a couple, but the main drawback is there's not enough water in the river to supply anybody but Flint. And two, there's no room to expand if there were ever water-intensive businesses that wanted to locate in Flint. You're already at your capacity with the Flint River. And if I could back up to your comment about increased future debt, it's really the ratepayers that are paying these bills. This isn't coming out of the general fund of the city. These are the ratepayers of the city of Flint and Genesee County. And the ratepayers are the ones that are either going to pay $4 million more a year to stay where you're at, or potentially pay $4 million less a year to either go to the Flint River or join KWA.
Okay, you know, because that's one of my concerns about the cost to the seniors and those that can least afford their water bills as it relates right now. Just this past weekend, I had a conversation with one of my constituents. He's an East sider. He actually was in the 4th ward and just became part of the 3rd ward, and they had some concerns about their water bills. So, you know, that's why I'm asking these questions because it just, it really troubles me that we can't afford to actually sign on with this water pipeline at this time, you know. I need to have some more general information, and I really would like to look at possibly having the DEQ come in and look at the Flint River, just to see. I would like to see that particular study, because I think that that is a viable option.
We've supplied that study several copies to the city of Flint and to this council. So if you need more, we'd be glad to get them to you.
Okay, I'm okay for right now. I might come back with another one. Councilman Freeman?
I believe we had a presentation about the Flint River as an option, didn't we? In the room back there?
Yes.
And we're going to continue to pay these water rates whether we go out on our own or whether we stay with Detroit. And the only difference being is that if we stay with, or go out on our own, we're in control of our own destiny versus being beholden to, you know, high, single-digit to double-digit increases from Detroit every, every year. I've got a question. You keep mentioning the $8 million, $8 million. The resolution says that a cost per unit is $355,000, $355,000. So at 18 units, that works out to $6.395 million. Is that the actual, or is there a?
That is the actual, Mr. Councilman. I believe the $8 million also includes your treatment costs at your own treatment plant.
So that $8 million you're speaking of is, it's not an additional amount of money to treat that water? That would be the total cost of delivery and treating?
Yeah, that's the estimated total for your share of the cost, the six-point-some million, and the treatment cost for your own people to treat the water at the existing Flint River, Stewart Avenue Water Treatment Facility.
And really, the only thing that's going to move on that with, then, since that is a fixed cost for the delivery of the water over 25 years, is going to be employee costs out at that plant?
Yes.
So that would be the only thing that's going to move up or down?
The bonded or fixed cost is the six-point-some million you're referring to.
Okay.
That's guaranteed.
Okay. And the $12 million that we're paying this year, is that the current year amount of water from Detroit?
That this year? It's the current estimate for 2013. You paid a little over $11 million last year.
And is that, does that include, I think they guaranteed this year, or they didn't guarantee, but they said the rate increase this year is 4.4%. Does that?
The suburbs are looking at approximately 4.4% on almost a $22 a unit factor. So you're looking at about a dollar a unit increase.
And is that included in that $12 million?
No.
So it's going to be higher than $12 million this year?
That dollar a unit increase will be on top of that, yes.
And over the last 10 years, what's been the average increase from Detroit?
Over the last 10 years, right around 10% annually.
And this year, because we're talking about doing something different, we got a 4.4%?
There was some, some, quite a bit of maneuvering to get it down to 4.4% for the suburbs. They borrowed $12 million out of the reserves in Detroit to help keep this year's costs down. They eliminated for one year all capital expenditures to keep the costs down this year. They shifted their operation and maintenance costs from their water rate customers to their sewer rate customers. All of these things can and will be switched back next year or the following year. And Moody's Investment, many investment houses have looked at the water and sewer situation in the city of Detroit and have determined that they're going to be looking at 8% to 12% rate increases at least for the next eight to 10 years.
So every year, our costs from Detroit are going to be another million dollars, every year?
Well, if it goes up 10%, it's going to be 1.2, and then it's going to be aggregate on top of that the following year if it's 10%. Easily could go up a million dollars a year, yes.
And staying with, or signed on to KWA basically locks in a price for 25 years?
Yes.
Excluding employee costs?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilman Lawler?
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
My concern is what's best for the city of Flint, not what's best for Genesee County, not what's best for the surrounding counties and cities, but what is best for the city of Flint. And I've heard from numerous constituents here, coming before us in this chambers and calling me, you know, by phone and expressing their concerns with this. And for myself, I have not been convinced enough that the KWA is what's best for the city of Flint. I'd like to see more information about the use of the city, about the Flint River, the use of the Flint River. There's no, there's no question we need to break away from Detroit, and we need to look at another supply of water. The study that was brought to us before showed us feasibility as to if the water was usable. We didn't really get a breakdown of the actual cost of using the Flint water versus going about it through the KWA. And I won't be convinced until I actually see those kinds of figures. Now, I do understand that, you know, there may be some peaks in the season where there may be a drought and the river may not be enough water to carry us through, but we can probably look at a backup to using, of getting water, maybe even from KWA. Or we can get a backup through maybe Detroit. But I'm just, I just have not been convinced that this is the best way for the city of Flint to go. Until I see some, some real hard figures to break down that analysis and prove that this is what's in the best interest of the city, it's difficult for me to support it. I know that the partners with this KWA will have to pay the cost of the building of this, correct?
Yes.
What is the, what is the, what is the percentage that the, that Flint will pay since Flint has, will have ownership of five people on the board versus Lapeer County, Lapeer, the city of Lapeer, Santa Lake County, and Genesee County? And then how does that cost, how does that then tie into what the residents are paying now with their water rates? And they're screaming now, you know, because they can't afford, you know, the water that they're getting. 10 years from now, you're saying that we'll be in a better position? We need to look at 10 years from now, and we need to look at right now as well, because currently, residents can't afford to stay here and pay the higher rates that they're paying now. So I'm trying to look at how can we maintain residents that we have here now, and then project in the future a reduced cost and better service for the Flint residents? Can you answer that?
Well, there's a lot of questions there. I'm going, I'm going to start with reiterating something, though. I came tonight mainly to let you know that Genesee County and its other customers are moving forward, and that the timeframe for us has ended. I didn't come tonight to try to convince you that you must go for KWA, because that's your decision to make. My main purpose tonight is, as I told Mr. Kurtz last week, is that we can't wait any longer because we lose a whole construction season. That's the main purpose. Now, that being said, you ask about percentages compared to, well, Lapeer County and compared, or excuse me, city of Lapeer is compared to the city of Flint, you're looking at 18 million gallons a day. City of Lapeer is looking at 1 million gallon a day. They're going to pay a proportionate share of the cost of that 1 million. Genesee County's looking at 42 million gallons a day. We'll pay twice as much on this total cost as the Flint residents will pay. And that is all laid out in the reports that have been supplied to the city. The very first report, the report that was done to clarify the Flint River, which also does give a comparison between cost of the Flint River versus cost of the city of Detroit versus cost of KWA, is in documents that the city has already. I will be glad to supply you and anybody else copies of those documents. So the information is there. It's not as if we have to go back out and redo all of these studies. It's done. So, short story, Lapeer pays less because they're using less. Genesee County pays much more because they're using more.
I'm not really speaking about the usage, but I'm speaking about the construction of it.
Yes.
And so you're saying it's based on the usage, the construction would be based on the usage?
Well, the usage is based on you're buying 18 million gallons of guaranteed capacity every day, whether you use it or not. You're not paying a commodity charge for that water. You're only paying for construction costs to build a pipe that is capable of bringing Flint 18 million gallons a day, and that's a fixed construction cost, and it's a fixed bond payment for the 25 years. So you're literally buying and owning 18 million gallons of capacity of the system. And it's all broken down on a percentage of how much you are buying into the system. I don't, I don't have the report with me. Honestly, I didn't, or I'd have those numbers for you. But the report is, again, if you don't have it, I'll get it to you, and it does break those percentages down for you. Off the top of my head, I want to say the total cost estimate right now is $274 million, of which Genesee, pardon? And Flint would be approximately 30% of that. So you're looking at somewhere $82, $83 million over 25 years. And if you think of it that way, you're paying $12 million a year. What's 12 times 25, even if the rates from Detroit didn't go up the next 25 years? So the county's portion, the city's is about 80, county's about 140, 150? About 160 is what the county's paying the portion of. It's almost twice as much. And then I think Lapeer is just a couple million because they only are using, buying that 1 million in capacity.
Thank you.
Councilman Neely?
Thank you, Jeff, for being here. I do want to publicly just tell you, Jeff, thank you for being here, coming over to answer these type of questions for us, and also providing information to us, you know, when we have a dialogue and conversation about this. Because, Jeff, really... Because Jeff, really, this is probably be the most important decision that this council body will make for this community, pushing for it for two and a half decades. This, this decision will be made pushing out into the future. And so it deserves a lot of attention and deserves a lot of questions and it deserves a lot of answers for the residents of the city of Flint and it's important. But my problem, Jeff, is not so much the fact that I, that I don't know that we need to move away from the, having our independence, our own independence by having a KWA, is that dissemination of information has been elusive, has been elusive to this body. We, at one time, were very much engaged, having some people presenting to this body in meetings and different things of that nature, but since we've had an emergency manager, many of us has been pushed away from the table. And not to be, not to slight the administration or and/or the emergency manager, but they have not been inclusive of this body. And information has not made it to us about this decision. It wasn't until Friday afternoon when Councilman Kincaid called me and said that he was going to be bringing a resolution forward for our consideration today. Councilwoman Crum wasn't even here for those original studies and I commend her for trying to get the information for the last 48 hours trying to make this decision. But information is important. And you standing here giving us information is also appreciated and important, but documentation, seeing those independent studies that you talked about, taking a look at them so we can provide, do some analysis on those studies, those independent studies that you talked about. And there's also a lot of variables, Jeff, and variables that you can't control as county commissioner, the drain commissioner. Because I think a large part of our high water bills inside the city of Flint was due to mismanagement of our own water system, of our own water fund. Mismanagement internally, leakage in our system, spending dollars elsewhere besides for the uses of water. But you did answer a few questions and I want to go back to it. It's a sense of urgency only because you have to move forward for the new construction years. Was that one of the things that you talked about?
That is the reason, yes.
And Jeff, we talked about the number five, five board members, but it's based upon the capacity uses. Is that five board member number that you talked about based upon the 18 units of capacity?
Yes, it is.
Now, the county will receive how many board appointments?
Seven? Six? Six.
Six?
Yes.
Okay. And Sanolack?
One.
And our other partner?
Lapeer's one and city of Lapeer is two.
Two. Okay.
Based on the current 18 and 1 million gallons a day from Lapeer.
Okay. And we're going to be bonding for this and this, this total cost is going to be diffused through a 25-year period, correct?
Yes.
Now, during the construction, this construction cycle is going to be about how many years, Jeff?
Our goal is to have the whole system completed within 30 to 36 months. So two and a half to three years.
Okay. Now, the bond payments for that, for the construction cycle is going to be how much, how much that's going to cost us during that cycle while we're building a pipeline?
The $6 million that was mentioned earlier.
Okay. And that's to be paid ongoing through that?
Through that 25-year cycle, yes.
Okay. Mr. President, most of my questions are going to be for the mayor.
32,000 per unit, isn't it? Their payment is 32 KWA. So it's not for, it's not for 32, it's 32 times the same year, 600,000 a year.
My mistake, it's not the six, it's the 32,000 a year, or unit. So what's the total?
About 600,000.
About 600,000 a year, excuse me.
Okay. And those are the type of documents I would like to take a look at and see how this thing plays out in, in, excuse me, were you done, Mr. Freeman? That portion, that paragraph, yes, but we're talking about a 25-year. If you can decipher all that from one paragraph for the 25-year agreement for the residents of the city of Flint, you have a higher level of thinking than most people in the world. But I would like to see the total documents and some of the studies in total before we engage into a vote pushing forward because most of my questions are going to be asked internally of our finance director and also our mayor, which is also the chairperson of the KWA. Because I do have a series of questions, you know, about how this thing's going to play out, what is going to happen with some of the variables that we have internally. Because even with the KWA, once we transport that water here, we're going to be treating that water because it's going to be a raw water source.
Yes.
And we have to treat that water ourselves at our own water treatment facility.
Yes, and that was intentional. The original plans by others was to bring treated water to Flint and ignore the fact that Flint has put $45 million into their own water treatment plant. So we changed the whole design to bring untreated water so you could utilize the plant that you've already put $45 million into. And that 45 million is one of the reasons your rates are higher than the surrounding communities. But that was intentional, that was purposeful, to bring untreated water so you could utilize your existing infrastructure.
Right. And, and that's one of the important things that we have to talk about as well as about the future of our water treatment facility. How many upgrades is going to be necessary for that to continue to treat untreated water as it comes into this community? What is the outlook of that? Because this emergency manager and/or administration has seemed to think it's been more prudent to outsource a lot of those things that we have. I would like to look at an agreement, I want to see some type of agreement making sure that we maintain control of our water treatment facility as a public entity rather than saying that we be, sign on to the KWA and they choose to outsource our wastewater, our water treatment facility for the next 25 years. Those are some of the internal questions and some of those things can't just happen over a period from Friday afternoon until Monday when you ask for this vote. And, and I would, I wouldn't mind having a special meeting so we can just go over those type of questions to look at this type of decision because these type of decisions can't be made willy-nilly. And I'll reserve the rest of my questions for our, Mr. Ambrose and also the mayor, which is the chairperson. But Jeff, thank you. I do appreciate the fact that you are here and that you have been willing to answer questions for us.
Thank you.
Councilman Wayill?
Thank you. Thanks for being here, Mr. Drain Commissioner, appreciate it. Couple of questions for you. You described the decision-making structure, I think, going forward, and that's where Flint gets the five votes out of 15. What does the current structure look like for KWA?
KWA's current structure is just a five-member panel.
Right, okay.
Made up from one person from each of the five communities.
And our representative is Mayor Walling on that?
Yes.
And he's also the chair of the, the board?
Yes.
Or the authority, rather? I thought I remember Councilman Lloyd being on either a committee or on the board, the authority. What, can you refresh my memory?
Yes, Councilman Lloyd was the treasurer. He, because of his outside job requirements, had to step down. We also had a secretary by the name of Amy Plank, who also had to step down. Neither of those positions have been filled while we wait to see how Lansing was going to react, whether we were going to do this as a partnership, or whether Genesee County was going to go it alone.
Okay, was Councilman Lloyd one of the five or he was?
No, that's, that's above and beyond the original five. The treasurer and the secretary are not voting members.
I see, okay. The, the thousand employee piece of it and drawing 75% of folks from the communities, I'm assuming that's all of Genesee County, which is inclusive, inclusive of Flint, Lapeer County, which includes Lapeer City, and then all of Sanolack County?
Yes.
So the, the companies that would win the bids or secure the bids for the project would be drawing employees from those areas?
Yes.
There would be no guarantee, if you will, that a certain number of folks would come from the city of Flint proper. It's, it's 75% of the employees across all those communities?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Have we, have we examined whether folks in the city of Flint in terms of skill sets, educational backgrounds, would be good fits for the positions that we're talking about? Has anyone taken a look at, at that piece of it?
I can only go based on the skill sets of this community historically and the different levels that are required, everything from labor all the way up to welders and equipment operators, cement workers, rod busters, et cetera. There's no way that I can contractually put into an agreement. In fact, the state and the federal government have changed the rules so much in the last 18 months. I'm surprised I haven't been challenged by requiring two things in our contract. One, the 75% local content, and two, prevailing wage, or Davis Bacon language, which are in our contracts. The state and the federal government are taking a different look, particularly the state government, about prevailing wage and worker requirements. We've put it into contracts anyhow and there's no additional way that I can stretch and say you're going to hire from here or here. All I can do from a legal standpoint is penalize, and that's what we've put in there, a 2% penalty if they don't. And 2% on $300 million total, it's about $6 million. That's a pretty good penalty. So from a legal standpoint, we have, in my opinion, done everything that we can to try to get as many workers from our area as possible.
Yeah, and I appreciate that. I'm just pointing out that there's a possibility, based on what the requirements are for the jobs, skills and education and all the rest, that, that we may not get the share that we would want, potentially. You know, I'm thinking about, and I don't know the exact figures on this, but we brought Diplomat Pharmacy to the city in the hopes of employing folks from the city of Flint at Diplomat, and I'm not entirely sure how successful that's been. So, you know, it's a concern of mine and I appreciate what you've said. What happens if the city of Flint does not participate in this and you therefore don't have our $6 million a year to, to service the debt? I'm assuming, does the cost of the project stay the same or does it, is it reduced if the city of Flint doesn't participate?
We've already run the analysis. Basically, we reduced the pipe size by, from a proposed 66-inch to a 48-inch. And the pumps, motors, and et cetera that drive this water and pump this water, it can be reduced to just service the Genesee County area to the point where our cost stays the same whether Flint's a partner or not.
Okay. And the $6 million or so a year, that's to service the debt, are there additional costs to the city of Flint? I think Mr. Freeman said something about employee costs, but I'm not clear what?
Those are your costs. The KWA has a fixed contract rate.
So our employee costs would be treatment, the water treatment?
Yes.
As an example?
Yes.
Okay. And, and you probably, I don't know if you know the answer to this, but I think you indicated that initially we were looking at 30-plus units for the city of Flint and we've backed off to 18. Was that something that was arrived at by our administration and, and shared with you all? How, how did the 18?
Wasn't arrived at by us. I think when we all started this review, that everybody, Lapeer, Flint, Genesee County, plugged in the highest numbers possible because we didn't want to be surprised by anything. And as time went on and the real numbers came out, because there was a time when Flint used higher volumes of water.
Sure.
That's been reduced considerably. It was the administration's decision to reduce it to the 18 MGD, which is below what you're currently using on a daily, or excuse me, it's above what you're currently using on a daily basis. And that was decided by the city, not by us. 18 would definitely take care of your needs for some time, if not for the next 25 or 30 years. But if one water-intensive business were to come into your community, you may be looking for additional capacity very quickly.
Mm-hmm. So we're?
That's all, the best guess you can, you look at your current use, you try to project where you're going to be in 25 years and you may, for instance, Genesee County, when we originally plugged in, we plugged in at 60 million, where we've backed off to 42 million, which is greater than we currently use today. But in our original study, we wanted to know the maximum costs for everything. And we've refined it with a lot of input to bring it down to what we believe the actual costs will be at 18 MGD and 36 MGD and the 1 and 2 million MGDs from the other communities.
Okay, so 18 is actually beyond what our current need is and there, so there's a little room to grow?
Yes.
Should there be businesses?
I'm going to guess, but I think on an average day you're using around 10? 11? About 11, Mr. Croft tells me. And on some peak demand days, you're probably up 13, 14 right now. So you definitely have at 18 some room to grow.
Okay, okay. And then my last question, I guess, gets at the timing of all of this and sort of relates to what Councilman Neely said. If, if the council were to postpone this decision so that we could have an educational session, if you will, and granted, I don't disagree with Councilman Freeman and yourself, Mr. Wright, that a lot of this information has been presented, but if there are members of council that want to review studies and ask additional detailed questions, I mean, in other words, is tonight our last opportunity to join in? Or if, if council members who need extra information, wanted another week or so or whatever it is to do that, would that be an option?
I will never say never, to start with. Tonight is an important time for us. Every day matters to us right now, the rest of the community partners and the rest of the people that we serve. We will move forward with it starting today as if it is just us. But I'm not saying that a week from now or two weeks from now is too late either. But there is going to come a point in the very near future that we're going to get to a point of certain design criteria that if Flint does come on board, we've got to back up and redesign, which costs more money. So there will come a point where Flint does want to participate as a full-blown partner, that it might cost Flint a little bit more for that redesign. But I'm not going to say you have to vote tonight. I will say that we're going to move forward. I have contracts I have to sign Wednesday of this week.
Okay.
And I have to move forward with those. From that point on, there are going to be some different cost parameters involved. But we will work with the city and the council and the mayor and his staff as long as it's financially feasible for you and us to do so.
Sure. And I will just say for the record that the mayor did telephone me today and I wasn't able to return his call to answer any questions I might have that he could answer. And Mr. Ambrose did email me on Friday with basically the same offer, so wanted to make that public and again, appreciate you being here. Thank you.
If I may, again, I'm not an attorney, but I, it's my understanding, and I mentioned this earlier to all the council, that you currently, in my opinion and based on what I've heard from other legal counsel outside of the city, you have the authority currently under the current form of emergency manager. There's a new form of emergency manager coming in at the end of the month where you do not have the authority to make the decision. So I would only caution that you don't get to that point in time where legally you don't even have the ability to make the decision where right now we believe you do.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilman Sargentson?
Good evening, Mr. Wright. If everything goes according to plan, when will we be telling Detroit that we no longer need their services, their water services?
To an extent, Genesee County has, even though we still hold a handout to Detroit also because there are ways that Flint and Genesee County can still work for Detroit, with Detroit as partners that benefits all communities. To, to date, that hasn't been taken up by the city of Detroit. We can always hope. But to an extent, we already have at Genesee County, the day that this body votes one way or the other would be the day Detroit would know whether they're going to have you for another 30 years or they're not going to. So that's the day that's going to happen.
And since Flint is, the water has to travel farthest to get to Flint, are we paying extra because of that?
No. As a matter of fact, we were very aware of the fact that the way Detroit is set up is what's given us such a hard time up here in Flint. is what's given us such a hard time up here in Flint and Genesee County. We're the furthest away from Detroit. That's why we pay three times as much as a person in Oakland County pays, off the same system. To me, that's been the unfairness of all of this. We pay twenty-one dollars a unit. In Oakland County, they pay eight dollars a unit. One of the richest counties in the country pays a third of what, almost a third of what we pay, off the same system. So, with that in mind, we set up this whole program, that whether you're Flint, or Sandalack County, right on the lake, or Genesee County, we all pay the same base rate. Flint pays base rate the same as a Genesee County customer, or a Sandalack County customer. There is no markup to get it to here.
Thank you, Jeff.
Okay, before you go, Jeff, I just have a couple of real quick questions. One of my concerns early on was the capacity, and there was a lot of discussion about the capacity, and I'm still concerned, even though where we are today, in our economic times in our community, that we're only using about ten million gallons a day. Our peak is about eleven, twelve in the summertime. It can bump up to as much as fifteen. Am I right?
Yes. In last July, you hit fifteen.
And I heard you say, and I don't want to take it out of context, I heard you say that the county is building in more capacity than what it currently needs. Is that more so than what Flint would probably be? Is that...
We're peaking, yes, it is, from sheer percentage-wise, we're peaking at around twenty-nine million gallons a day. So, from twenty-nine up to the forty-two, our percentage of excess capacity is a higher percentage than what Flint's purchasing.
Okay. If Flint got into a situation where they needed more capacity, July, August, out of the pipeline, and the county had the ability to provide us with an extra million gallons a day, or maybe two million gallons a day, is that feasible in the relationship with this pipeline, to be able to do that, or are we locked in to...
It's not only feasible, it is part of the bylaws and the authority papers, that if any community has excess capacity, and another community needs it, that community has first rights to it.
Okay. Okay. So, if we needed, I'm just using the number of twenty-two MGDs, we wouldn't have to go to the river, we could get it from the pipeline and purchase it from the county, is that correct?
Yes.
At what rate?
At the same rate. Again, we've tried to set this up, we're partners.
I just wanna make sure that everyone knows that it's the same rate regardless.
Yes.
Okay. All right.
And the Flint River's been mentioned blending a little bit. You can also blend KWA water with Flint River water. I know there was discussions about blending Detroit water with Flint River water. You can blend KWA water much cheaper, and here's why. Detroit supplies treated water, so you're paying the treated water costs. You have to mix Flint River water with it untreated. You mix it up, and you gotta treat it again, so you're treating the water twice.
Right.
KWA is untreated, you mix it with the untreated Flint River water, you treat it once. So, that's why your costs are much less, if you're thinking about blending, to blend KWA water, as opposed to blending treated Detroit water.
Okay. Any more questions before I have Jeff sit down, and maybe either the mayor, or Howard Croft, or Jerry Ambrose can come up and answer a few questions? This is the most dialogue that we've had on KWA, so, I mean, I think this is important to do it out in the open, and in the public, whether or not we vote on this resolution tonight or not. Councilman Neely?
Yeah, just one more question, based upon what you just said there, Jeff, about the blending option that you just put before us. Is it possible that we can buy less capacity of the KWA, with the idea that we're gonna be drawing water from the Flint River water, so that can reduce our overall cost? Say, for instance, like Scott said, we use about maybe ten to eleven million gallons a day, peak, maybe, maybe up to fourteen million gallons in the hot summertime, but residents are leaving Flint, industry is leaving Flint, so we, our usage is getting less and less. So, with the blending possibility, is it, say, for instance, if we wanted to buy twelve units of capacity from KWA, and then, for whatever peak periods that we may have, we can draw off the Flint River water to do the blending, to cover ourselves and the residents of the city of Flint, is that a possibility as well?
Yes, absolutely. If I could add a couple of things very quickly, though. You do say industry is leaving Flint. I'm gonna point to the positive of Diplomat Plaza, and some other things. I truly believe, based on conversations that I've had with people all over this country, particularly the drought-stricken west of this country, the raw, high-quality water that's made available from Lake Huron puts Flint at the center of the map for potential large-volume water users, industries that use a lot of water. You will be able to sell water at ten cents on the dollar, if you so choose, to any other community in the state of Michigan, to encourage some of these water-intensive businesses that are already looking around the Great Lakes region, because they can't get enough water in the southeast of these United States. It's amazing how much of the food that's grown in this state is shipped to the southwest for processing, and then shipped back to us to eat. The goal would be to use that water to make that processing done here, in agro-businesses, it's generally referred to, and to be distributed from here. So, I think it has the potential to bring industry back that is water-intensive, absolutely. The use of the blending aspect of it, you have, and staff has this information, to blend Flint River water with either Detroit water or KWA water requires Flint to spend more money on upgrades to its treatment plant than if they were just treating lake water. There's a lot more processes involved, because there's suspended solids and other chemicals that are in the river water that aren't in the lake water. So, if you go the blending road, either source, you've gotta expend more dollars at your treatment plant than you would normally have to just to treat lake water.
Yeah, I do understand that. It's just, looking at the cost to the users, our Flint users, we wanna try to minimize the cost.
Absolutely.
With the best option available with those...
The general answer, though, is yes. If you wanted to drop volume of lake water, with the idea you're gonna use more river water, the KWA has no problem contractually doing that.
Okay. I think that completes my questions for Mr. Wright, and also, again, Jeff, I wanna reiterate my thank you to you for being here to answer these questions, and you know, I may even give you a call later on.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jeff. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, Jerry, Howard, do you wanna come up and talk about the cost versus staying with Detroit? I know you've run a lot of analysis on this project, and kind of share where the administration is on KWA at this time?
Yes, and thank you, Councilman, for the time here tonight. I'll start, I think, in the same manner as our Drain Commissioner for Genesee County did about the timing, and like a lot of issues that come before this body, they're difficult, they require information and discussion. We've had numerous meetings since I've been in this position about Karragnani Water Authority, and what's involved with the river, and Detroit, and all the various projections. You know, this issue has now been, first, with us, in traditional charter operations, then we had Public Act Four, where this body did not have an ability to convene and consider this decision. We've been under Public Act Seventy-two, Drain Commissioner, Karragnani Water Authority has provided all the possible time available. We're now at a point where the state is going to be making a decision, it appears in the next couple of days, about the city of Detroit, and their financial management going forward. There's a new public act that's coming into effect, that will again, provide enhanced authority to the state-appointed managers. So, we determined that there was a window of opportunity here, for this body to take its rightful role of setting the course for this city's long-term future. Much like the Drain Commissioner said, you know, the nine of you are the only ones who are in a position to vote on this matter. You know, I don't get a vote, Finance Director doesn't get a vote, this is your decision. You have what you need in front of you to make that decision. It's likely that we could wake up tomorrow, and the state could take a different approach. They could contract us with the city of Detroit, as part of their program for the city of Detroit going forward, and our citizens would then be required, for the next thirty years, to pay those annual rate increases. So, I think what you'll hear from the team that's available tonight to answer questions, is to give you the facts and information that you might need to make a decision, and much of this are things that we frankly discussed before. You know, we were all together when we incorporated KWA, and you know the structure of how that works, and how the board's composed. You might not, you know, recall all the details, but we made those decisions together. So, this is where we are tonight. None of us know what situation we'll be in tomorrow, or the next day, for that matter. So, I just ask you to keep that in mind, as you consider, you know, this decision here tonight. So, I'd welcome any questions that I may be able to answer, certainly if they're of a technical nature, in terms of our water plant operations, or the financial projections, then the city's Finance Director, Jerry Ambrose, is here, as well as the Director of Infrastructure and Development, Howard Croft.
I just, I just have one question, before I ask my colleagues. Is the administration's position on this resolution gonna change from today to two weeks from now, as far as the amount of MGDs that we use?
No, and again, this...
I just...
Right, this body, I mean, I heard the Drain Commissioner describe how at one point in time, you know, before I was in this position, a study was started that had us at a very high level. Since that time, we've lost residents, we've lost businesses that used to use much of that water, so we now have an updated, I think, more realistic projection. You may remember that, in our discussions, fall of 2011, we were discussing twenty MGD. So, that's been even further refined since that time, what the city can do with some better maintenance, so that we don't lose as much water in the transition, transmission through our pipes. So, I think after, you know, what's now been over two years of independent analysis from row engineering, from multiple city staff, and leadership there, as well as now, the state contracted with Tucker Young Environmental to review the numbers yet again, that they've helped us come to this point of eighteen MGD, as a good balance between our current needs, some likely growth, and savings for our residents over the long term. So, I can't see any new information. You know, it's taken a year or so to refine twenty MGD to eighteen. I think that's a good number for us to move forward with, and certainly not gonna be anything in the next day or two or week that would, that would change that estimate that's now been, you know, refined over more than a year.
Okay. Thank you. Let me start with Councilman Nolan.
I just wanted to find out, have we had conversations with the DEQ related to the Flint River?
Yes.
Now, do we have a report on that?
I can ask Howard Croft to come up, again, those three, you know, those three options that have been described have been, have been analyzed, and as the Drain Commissioner indicated, it is, if you wanna talk hypotheticals, it is a hypothetical possibility to use the Flint River as a source. It would be extraordinarily risky, given the water levels that Great Lakes Basin is experiencing even now, not to mention what might happen over twenty or thirty years. There are high treatment costs involved in that water, and it would require large capital investments in the dam infrastructure, to ensure that that water level, if it's our primary source, see, we've only had it as a backup source for the last thirty to forty years, and the requirements on how that water level is maintained would be heightened if it's our primary source of drinking water for our community. So, all of those costs, unlike what we're describing in KWA, where that's bonded by that new authority, and the city of Flint has a contractual relationship, we would be, as a city, taking on all of that debt. Whether we could actually get those loans is not clear to me. We don't have a bond council here tonight, but the ability of the city of Flint, by itself, to go out and finance those improvements is highly questionable. So, you know, it's risk factor after risk factor after risk factor, and you have to ask yourself at some point, why, being in the benefit of being sixty miles from one of the cleanest sources of fresh water on the planet, we would be choosing, for the next thirty years, to use a questionable, risky water source that's probably more expensive than the alternative? So, you know, let's think about our environment that's around us, and take advantage of this position that we're in. That water, in an emergency situation, the water out of Lake Huron, a mile and a half from the shore, where the intake is in place, it's drinkable without being treated in an emergency. It's that clean.
I really would like, if we do have a report from the DEQ, I would like to see it, because I haven't, I've never seen it. So, that's something that I would like to look at for myself, I would like to review it, you know, especially before we actually move forward with this. You know, that's something that I really would like to see, because I've been doing a little research over the weekend, and I just really wanna have some questions answered.
Well, the DEQ has said we can.
Well, I would like to see it. I haven't seen it. You know, that's it. I wanna actually see it myself, I wanna be able to read it, and I wanna be able to decipher the information, and then, you know, I can make an informed decision. But until I have the information before me, it's quite hard for me to actually go forward. I really wanna see that report.
Well, I know all of us had the same report from July of 2011, I believe it was, from Land and from Row.
And I read everything.
Yeah, okay.
I read everything. I don't remember it. So, I would like to see it again, so if you could email it to me, I'll read it tonight.
All right. Any other questions, Councilman, do Councilman Neely, Sargentson, and then Councilman Lawler?
Yes, I stand here, Dane, and I listened to you talk about this, and this is a question of not us embracing the future, but it's more of a question of if we're gonna make a decision, that we have to make an informed decision for the residents for the next twenty-five years, and we don't have the information, Dane. The report from Tucker Young that you just cited, the independent study, that was done after 2011, and we haven't, correct?
Yeah, the state contracted for that. We, you and I won't have copies of that report.
Okay. But you cited the Tucker Young report, and you're...
Yeah, I've seen it in the meetings where Treasury staff have looked at that report.
We have, you don't make a vote on this, as you said, right?
Right, right.
You seen the report?
Yes, I've seen the report on a meeting table.
Right.
But this is where I wanna emphasize, I don't think, Councilman, you and I have a difference of opinion in this, I just wanna remind you that the state has made certain decisions relative to our community, and we can allow the state to continue to make those decisions on behalf of our community, or we can make a decision in our leadership capacity. So, just as you weigh the decision about more time and more information, just remember that's in the context of Public Act Seventy-two, and what that allows the state to do on the city's behalf.
Right. And Dane, you also said, "We have all the information before us to make a decision." All we have is a paragraph summarizing what financial obligation it may or may not have to us. What I'm saying, Dane, is that I think we're like-minded, trying to make the best decision for the residents of the city of Flint, and making that good decision for the residents of the city of Flint, for twenty-five years, two and a half decades, we need to have access to information. I have not had access to the information that I think I need, to make sure, to a certainty. Now, Mr. Wright has always been forthcoming with... Now, Mr. Wright has always been forthcoming with information, and he's a straight shooter. You know, he's always been a straight shooter with me. I have concerns with our administration and the emergency manager. Now, when you talk about Public Act 72, this is the first time that I'm hearing today that we have the ability independently to make that decision because we have an emergency financial manager. This constitutes some financial decisions. So, I'm still, you know, I'm listening to what Jeff said and what you're saying as it relates to us making a decision today about PA 72 and engaging into a contract. But as I understand it, financial decisions will be made by Ed Kurtz. We haven't even had Peter Bay here, but he came to the last meeting. And so, we're really getting a lot of new information, and I want to make the best decision for this community. And I said it earlier, this is going to be probably one of the, well, the most important decision for this community moving forward. And I want to be comfortable enough to say to my constituents and the residents of the City of Flint that that decision entrusted to us, that we had all the informations besides a paragraph and being pushed away from the table because we have not been in those meetings with the state. As you said, you saw the Tucker Young report bringing us down to a capacity level which was 50% of the original capacity agreement with 36 units. Now, we're down to 18, bringing us into compliance of what our use model may be for the future in the next 25 years. But we would like to see those studies, and I agree with Councilman Nolan. Let us be comfortable with the decision that we have to make, and I'm going to afford a motion later on to postpone this decision from a week from today and allowing us to get some information from Mr. Wright, also from you, and possibly the state of Tucker Young, where we can review this in total and then make a good informed decision for the residents of the City of Flint. Because being notified on Friday afternoon that this will be before us is not fair to me or my colleagues, and it's definitely not fair to the residents of the City of Flint.
So, Councilman, when I refer to the information we've received, I know up until fall of 2011, we spent together as a body numerous meetings and hours, and we actually made the request for the comparison with the Flint River. That request was fulfilled. I mean, forgive me if you don't remember the report or that presentation, but we already had all those conversations, okay, in the fall of 2011. And those comparisons were laid out. What's been shared tonight is that there have been a few relatively minor adjustments because there's been now, more than a year's elapsed, but the trend lines are the same. The savings with KWA relative to Detroit are substantial, 100, 200, 250 million, depending on the rate increases from Detroit. That's a fact. And if we get tied to Detroit two days from now, or three days from now, then we will be under a contractual obligation for the next 30 years to pay those rate increases. So, we have a window of opportunity here tonight. We're all here to answer those questions. And Drain Commissioner, I think, was good about outlining how initial purchasing is showing that we're below estimates so far. So, the intake came in a few million dollars cheaper. The preliminary estimates on bond financing have come in a little bit cheaper with the interest rate. So, there are a lot of things working in KWA's favor, but the reality of the trend is the same. And I think that is our responsibility as a policy and strategy board. You know, none of us, I'll speak for myself, you know, I'll never understand every dollar that we spend at the water treatment plant. We have staff who, we have to depend on their expertise for that. So, those are the only refinements, as far as I can tell, that have been made over the last year, year and a half. And we were prepared, you know, at that time in fall of 2011 to consider a contract with KWA for 20 MGD. And I think those numbers have been refined to a point that'll save us some money and work for the KWA project.
I do recall that meeting, Dane. And I guess we have a different understanding where our minor changes because remember the capacity then, you were talking about 36 units, is now 18. That's 50%. That's a pretty measurable difference.
Yeah.
But that was what...
36 was the max of the plant. The study in the fall of 2011, unlike the original first study and construction estimate done by Row, we were at the 20 in the summer of 2011.
Right, Dane, but what I'm trying to tell you is that I don't think you have the words in your vocabulary that convince me to make a decision today without the proper information that is needed. You just don't possess those. But, and also, if you remember, we had this dialogue about...
That's your choice, Councilman.
I understand that. I understand that. Thank you.
I've worked diligently on this for a long time. You know, you certainly know my opinion, so it's your responsibility to have yours.
Right, and I don't think we're far away... I don't think we're far away from trying to make a good decision. I think we need to make a good decision, but you have to base, your decisions based upon the information.
Yeah.
It's not so long ago that we talked about Swedish biogas being in our wastewater treatment facility, how many jobs that was going to bring, how that was going to reduce our costs over there. Those digesters are not firing over there currently. We gave them, they got a grant from the state, they got dollars from a grant, they got dollars from this municipality, and they got, they're over in our wastewater treatment facility now. That project, I don't think we can look at it as a success because they have not met the marks of what they said they were going to do, providing jobs, energy to facilitate that plant, and those different things. And those, that information has not been available to this body as well. But when it came before us, we made a decision based upon the lofty ideas that it was going to provide jobs, it was going to reduce our costs. Those things, to my knowledge, has not happened. And so, when we talk about the use of water, our water treatment facility, our wastewater treatment plant, we need to make decisions based on information. I can't believe that you will be opposed to us getting the information.
And that's why, don't take it as a personal recommendation from me. Just take it as a reminder of the legal situation that our city is in. The fact is, the state has not yet required the city to enter into a long-term water supply contract. We have literally a few days, or maybe a week, or week and a half left before Drain Commissioner, with the interests of his customers in mind, has to move forward. So, it's, don't take it as a personal position of mine. I don't find much of what's happened over the last year and a half to be comfortable. This isn't about you or I being comfortable. This is about what may happen in the next few days to the City of Flint.
Right, but what I'm saying, Dane, we've been under...
So, that's just, that's just a fact.
We've been under PA 72 since November.
Right.
The Drain Commissioner has been pushing this for the better part of two years that I've known. So, this stuff has not just been new. If you're saying that we had, we got the ability to make the decision under PA 72, we should have been coming way, you should have been coming here before today saying that we have to do this, make this decision tonight because we had a big window there.
We've continued to have KWA meetings, and those have been available to the public. You know, the Drain Commissioner's been available. I think, I know he's been on your radio show numerous times to answer these kinds of questions.
As far as I know, it's about the KWA...
So, remember, it's not, you have the opportunity to vote on this. Maybe, I don't know if any other council members have anything else to ask, or Councilman Neely and I can keep talking, but...
I mean, specifically, what is it that you need?
Information, Josh. The packages that we talked about, the information, the studies...
Specifically, what do you want?
Josh, listen to me, so make this, because my family's going to be impacted by this. My mother, my children, my wife, who lives in Flint, are going to be impacted by this.
Okay.
So, what I'm saying to you, any information that will help me to make the decision, any information that they may have, if you're asking me about what information do I need specifically, I mean, I don't know how much information they have.
So, you don't know what it is that you need to make a decision?
He referenced Tucker Young's study.
Tucker Young is the engineering firm for DWSD, so you want their study?
Well, I would like to see their study.
Okay.
I would like to see the capacity, the contracts in total. And then, there's going to be a few more questions that I have for...
What do you mean by capacity? I mean, I'm just trying to get a list together so that if we do postpone it, we can get you this information so that next week, if we were to come here, we wouldn't have the same discussion over again, that we'd actually be able to move forward.
No, we won't have the same discussion, Josh. I know you've probably been at the table as they made these meetings, but we, some of us have not.
I have.
Let me make it very broad.
I've deliberately gone and asked questions, yes.
Yes, okay. As you've been at the table. Any and all information, Dane, that will be germane to making us, helping us make this decision for the residents of the City of Flint will be appreciated. So, if that information can be forwarded, Jeff, I know Councilman Lawler and Councilman Nolan specifically asked for a couple of different things. Any and all information that will be germane to us helping us make the decision beyond the paragraph and what Councilman Freeman has asked that he has not shared with this body, any information will be greatly appreciated beyond the paragraph right here that we have today.
All right, Councilman Nolan?
You know, I don't have a problem per se with the Chicago Water Authority, but my problem is, I want to see this DEQ report before I make any decision on moving forward, you know, before I vote on this. I want to actually see it, and I want to read it for myself.
We don't have a written report. DEQ has not provided, has not provided a written report. So, this is, the city was asking questions to fully explore, again, you know, as we did when the Row and Land Study was put together in the summer of 2011. The emergency manager and emergency financial managers, my understanding, had those same questions. So, they went, they went out and, you know, asked the DEQ and looked at those options again. And, you know, for the, I think, third time in three years, folks came to the same decision that, you know, it is hypothetically possible, but it's more risky, more costly, and we have to take on a lot of debt as a city to make it happen.
So, we should have some executive summary or something on the conversations that you had? If you have something like that, I would like to see it.
Just to interject very quickly, Councilman Nolan, there is, there is a report that was done by the city's engineer that laid out for the council and the DEQ what would have to be done physically to use the Flint River as primary source. It even goes into dollar amounts. If I remember correctly, it said 61 million would have to be spent on the dams and some other things. So, there's a report. I don't know if that report was Howard presented to the state, and the state said, "Yeah, that's what you've got to do." I'm not in that meeting. I do know that there's a report that lays it out, and I believe that's the report that the state reviewed.
You know, and we might have gotten that report. I don't remember it, but could you email it back to me? And I'll read it tonight. All right.
Okay, further questions for the mayor and Councilman Sargentson? Sheldon, were you done? I'm sorry.
Dane, one of our biggest problems is the leaking.
Right.
Now, when we hook up to the new pipeline, is that going to significantly, it's got to significantly affect the leaking problem? Or is the leaking before Tennessee County?
Both.
Or once?
Yeah.
Can anybody, I'm just trying to get an idea if it's going to impact us, or, you know, are we going to get less leakage? I'm sure we are, but are we going, are we going to have to make significant changes in our infrastructure in Flint? And I'm sure we will, but...
The distribution system that we have on the city side of the water treatment plant will continue to leak until we make those, you know, maintenance repairs that were put off for a long time. So, that portion of it does not change with KWA. But it is part of the estimate of why it's now believed that we can manage with 18 MGD long-term versus 20 is because with some continued attention to that internal city distribution system, we can have essentially the benefit of what we would have had before with a higher amount of water by fixing our pipes. The KWA line that will hook into our water plant will, of course, be, will be brand-new and will have virtually, virtually no leakage. And that'll be a benefit from the pipe that's paying, that we're paying for, that we connect into the Detroit system. That serves both Flint and Tennessee County.
And if we take care of our infrastructure, our end of the deal, it should significantly impact our water prices and, you know, the future of our...
Just to add to what the mayor had mentioned, yes, a lot of the leakage is past...
Jeff, I'm talking to the mic so everybody can hear you.
A lot of the leaks are past the point. They're down the city streets, et cetera. But we're all paying for almost a 25% leak rate from the City of Detroit right now. So, every water line that leaks in Oakland County, Macomb County, Wayne County, and on the pipeline from the lake to us right now, for instance, that same pipeline was repaired a year ago, and you were losing how many millions of gallons a day? Millions of gallons. So, it's both sides. The KWA will eliminate the leakage from one side. Okay, any more questions for the mayor? Councilman Lawler?
Yes, Mayor Walling, you and I had a conversation about two hours, three hours ago today. And you asked me a question, did I receive a call from a certain individual about this meeting? And I told you, no, I did not, certain individual on this council. And I told you that I did not. And you and I engaged in conversation, and I told you some of my concerns, and you didn't have answers to my concerns that I was asking, but those were good questions that, dialogue that we had, and then said, "Well, I'll have an opportunity to, you know, pose them to Jeff and to whomever else is here." The last time we met on this, yes, it was back in 2011, in the fall of 2011. And under my assumption, as Neely has said already, I didn't think we had any control of this. Honestly, I thought that this was going to be decided by the emergency manager, the financial manager, and it was going to be a done deal. But you have been engaged, and you have been, you know, championing this and chairing this. And so, you have been fully engaged and on top of, you know, what's been going on. But just out of fairness, you know, just consider, and not from a, an attack on KWA from my standpoint, because I want to do what's best for the City of Flint. And, you know, I didn't even have a full weekend to pull information together that I may have had back in the fall of 2011 to review, to make an informed decision today. But I still, I just want to make a good decision. I just want information to tell me that utilizing the Flint River is not in the best interest of Flint. Not to supply for the county or any surrounding cities or counties, but just to supply for the City of Flint and then to use maybe KWA as a backup for those high-peak seasons. I'd just like to see those hard figures to prove that that is not in the City of Flint's best interest. Because I'm concerned about, again, I'm concerned about the high water rates that we have now and then what the additional cost would be once all of this is over with the partnership of KWA. So...
And I was listening, Councilman, with your permission, Mr. President, I think it's appropriate time for Mr. Howard Croft or Mr. Jerry Ambrose to provide some further details on that. You may not get everything that you're asking for at this minute, but the two individuals who have been involved in this, I think, could give you some information along those lines.
Howard, you want to come to the mic, answer questions from the council?
Thank you, Council President. I think first, what I'd like to say is, it has been about a year, and initially, I spent quite a bit of time investigating into what would be the best decision for the city. And I think first, I'd like to actually thank the Drain Commissioner. He's spent an extreme, a large amount of time working with me, answering every question I had. A lot of the same questions that are being asked here today have been asked by me, they've been asked by the emergency manager, they've been asked by the mayor, I've heard them asked by the State Department. I mean, these are all good questions. Every one of these are good questions. And I've been fortunate enough to see these answered several times. As far as the river, I agree with Councilman Nolan. I actually asked the DEQ to come into town and sit with me at our plant.
Howard, pull the mic down just a little bit. There you go.
I asked the DEQ to come, which they did.
I'm sorry, pull it up.
Oh, pull it up.
Okay, is that better?
There, that's better.
The DEQ did come approximately April of last year and sat at the plant with myself, with Brent Wright, the plant supervisor, with Dordy Johnson, our utilities administrator. And then, we subsequently went to Lansing and sat with them again with a big panel, and we asked these questions. And while they did not present a specific report... And we asked these questions. And while they did not present a specific report, some of the things they did tell us, just talked about the quality of the water. The cost of upgrades that we will have to do to treat water from KWA, which is just about the cleanest water in the state, is about $7.1 million. The cost to position ourselves to treat the water from the river is $61 million because of the requirements to turn that water into quality drinking water. And there's no getting around that.
You said 61 million?
61 million because of the process to turn that water, which is considered very hard, into a quality drinking water, which is one of the things we want to give the city, is quality drinking water. And that is in the report that we can put forward to you. In addition to that, there are studies that have to be done on the water even prior to that. You have to do a 24-month, a two-year study to determine the levels of chemicals in the river, to determine what level of treatment you have to do. And treating the water, just the utility bill alone will go up hundreds of thousands of dollars a year because of part of the process. It's called ozone. We don't have to do that with KWA and Lake Huron Water. These are some of the reasons why we don't, we would want, we could blend, but if we blend, then we have to introduce the extra cost. I was one of the people involved in the decision to go to 18 MGD. Originally, in the original study, it was 36 MGD years ago because that was the maximum that the plant could do. And then, like the mayor said, that was brought down to 20. As I sat here and I listened, I wrote down the reasons when we were looking at 18 MGD. And they're the same questions that have been asked and the same answers that have been given. The commitment to reduce loss, that was one of the factors. Right now, where our usage is between 10, 11 million gallons a day, that's with between 25 and 30% loss on the city side. One of the things that we're striving for is a commitment to reduce that loss. And I think when we talk about things like the upcoming budget, one of the things the state asked when we went for them, they said, "You know what? If we're going to allow you to do this, what are you going to do about that loss? We want to see a plan." So, while I'm not here every day and every week, this is one of the main topics. What is our plan to reduce that loss? Then, our daily MGD becomes about eight MGD a day. I wrote down here projected annual usage. We track what was the usage been over the last decade, what is it now, and what is the future use. There's a difference between what we use on an average day and then what we peak at. We don't want to-
How could you determine that with the amount of leakage we have?
We look at how much we purchase, and then we offset that with how much we bill. So, we find out what the leakage amount is. So, when I say-
How could you do that with all the water? How could you make a, how could you make a determination when you don't know how much is leaking?
Well, we know how much has come from Detroit and how much goes out, and then how much of what goes out have we built.
Could I ask one more question? Is it a state law to fluoridate water?
Depends on the federal requirement, yes.
There is a state law.
Also, it is a state DEQ requirement that you have a backup. You mentioned a backup. We would be stuck with either Detroit Water and Sewer Department giving us a high rate for a backup, or we would have to commit to a capacity amount of what the backup was going to be. And it seemed to make more sense to do it the other way, to commit to 18 million gallons of the highest quality water in the state, to choose an amount that gives us room to grow. And then, if we need to grow in the future, which is what we all want to see happen, we would have two options. We would have the option of purchasing additional capacity, or we would have the option of then looking to blend. And if we're growing, this would be at a time when we would be hopeful that the city would have much more tax revenue coming in, and we'd be able to afford to do those things. These are some of the thought processes of how to get to the right number. 18 MGD and the number we choose is going to be directly related to what our construction cost is. So, we don't want to choose a number that was so high that our construction costs were so high, and we were never going to use that capacity. And we don't want to choose a number that's too low just to save on, have a lower construction cost, and then turn around, and in four years, we need more capacity. So, it was a very difficult decision.
How long are we, is that for 25 years, 18 for 25 years?
Correct.
And in a worst-case scenario, if something fell apart, how would we get out of that agreement?
We would look for anyone else on the system. After 25 years, the construction costs go away no matter what. But we would have the option, and correct me if I'm wrong, if there was another user that wanted to come on board, then we would be able to sell that capacity to them and have them take that portion. Would that be correct?
That would be correct. And you also have to remember, at the end of that 25-year period, this 6 million you're paying annually is gone. So, you're going to end up with some of the cheapest water for our kids and grandkids of anybody in the state when that's done. And one quick answer to your fluoridation, it is a federal requirement to have it. But you, as a community, can vote. If the people want to put it on the ballot to vote to have it taken out of your system, you can. But without the vote, you have to have it.
And that would save us approximately $40,000 a year or-
Certainly. So, while I may not be able to answer every question, I understand that time is short.
Yeah, I do have, I have, Councilman Neely, they have some questions for you, Howard, and then I'll go around the room and see if somebody else has some.
Howard, thank you. And you've always been forthcoming with the information that's, that Mr. Kurtz has allowed you to give out. But Howard, my question is to a couple of statements that you just made. We talked about the capacity of 18 units per year, and you talked a little bit about the quality of water from the Flint River and the cost to treat that water. And talk about, you also said something about the purest water in the state of Michigan coming through. But Howard, what I would like to hear from you, and because this is going to be in your area of expertise, the plan, the overall plan to repair our infrastructure, to reduce the amount of leakage that we have, because a leak out is essentially a leak in. Because we can pick up some contaminants, if water's leaking out, something can leak in. And the cost of treating that water or purifying that water could be impacted by the leakage as well. So, you know, if we go with the 25-year agreement, I would like to look at a plan that says, "Okay, we have these issues internally, aside from the KWA, getting a good fresh source of water, giving us some independence from Detroit." But what is our overall plan? How are we going to address that? And how is that going to be turned into a cost for the user? Those things have not been made available, and those dialogues have not happened between the administration and/or this council body. Yes, it's a purer source of water than the Flint River water. We understand that. The cost to treat that water would be a little less. We understand that. But how are we going to repair our infrastructure? And remember, Howard, a leak out could be potentially a leak into the system as well.
Sure. No, that's a good question. I think it's one of the first asked by everyone, and it's a difficult one. What I would say is, it's part of what we're doing and looking forward. And what I mean by that is, we've asked our own water treatment division, our water sewage center, and our pollution control plant for every piece of data on what we do. We've talked to the Drain Commissioner about how their system functions. We've talked to other municipalities to get our hands around what are the most important things we can do. There are two funding opportunities through the state to address our infrastructure. One is the DWRF, the Drinking Water Revolving Fund. One is the S2, which is a revolving grant. Both of those offer opportunities through us, through the DEQ and through the state, to address big infrastructure needs like sewage backups and set a plan going forward. Certainly, the first year, we did not feel like the city had the finances to participate in the DWRF. We did participate in S2 because it was directly related to sewage backups in the city. We have studies being done right now, smoke tests that will allow us to prevent areas of the city where we get sewage backup. And then, going forward, we're looking at the age of the infrastructure. We're looking at what the impact of the meters have. We're looking at what the impact of theft is. And we're trying to make a decision with the limited resources and the limited manpower we have, where do we address first so that we can come here and say, "These are all the problems that cause this 25% to 28% loss. And here's the plan to attack these one at a time over the next five years to reduce that loss hopefully to about 15%." I can't stand here now and say we have the whole plan, but I can tell you that I spend four to six hours every single day working on it. And I'm open to any suggestions or sharing any information that will help us reach that goal.